Twenty-eight, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, Walden Minnetaker, please call the roll.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated November twenty-nine, two thousand and twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the Wooddale Memory Care cursory site plan review. With that, Mr. Forrest, will you take us through?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, as you all probably remember, last July, uh, we reviewed and approved a re-subdivision of the Wooddale Station condominium project. They re-subdivided that and sold the lot off to a organization now known as Wooddale Memory Care. The subdivision was approved. We did a, the developers agreement with them was approved. They established a letter of credit which are, we are holding. And what they've done from the original building plan that was, uh, displayed and approved at this meeting, they're really trying to make this building state-of-the-art. So they've been reconfiguring, uh, floors and, and the layout of the building. And what they decided was they wanted to make the building a little more aesthetically pleasing. So rather than just have one six-story rectangular box, per, uh, the information that was in your package, you can see they've kind of divided the building into thirds and they've, uh, canted the two ends in towards, uh, Irving Park a little bit so the building has a little bit of shape to it. Staff did consider that a minor site plan change. The parking remains compliant with the requirements that were set forth in the subdivision and the developers agreement. And, uh, we just wanted to bring this forward to the Community Development Commission. They've reviewed this. They approved it unanimously. And then we wanted to bring it forward to you at committee. I don't believe you need to take any action and, and a formal vote, but the, uh, people from Wooddale Memory Care would just like to, really, your approval of the, uh, the shape, the change of the building design, and, uh, they're ready to proceed. The engineering plans and landscaping plans have been, uh, in review with Christopher Burke and Associates. They should be in the final phases now of approving this revised site plan. And, uh, hopefully within the next few weeks, we would be in a position to at least issue them a site plan permit. They do have to relocate the water main. Uh, we just got the plats of vacation for the existing water main and plat of dedication for the new location of that water main. So that, uh, I've talked to the city attorney since that's already been, uh, mentioned and adopted as part of the subdividers agreement. It's just a matter of putting signatures on it and recording it out at the county. So I would like to introduce Mr. Allen Semeca, kind of the point man for Wooddale Memory Care. If he wants to expand on anything I've said, or if you have questions, he would be the man to talk to, so. Allen, you can talk to the podium.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
John, you said Christopher Burke. I thought we, we don't have him anymore, do we?
Uh, yes, they're on the approved list, and, uh, there were a couple of reasons that we used them for the engineering review.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Allen Semeca. I'm with, uh, Wooddale Memory Care. Diana's, uh, from LinTech. She was the engineer for, for the project that's been coordinating the effort with the city engineers. John did all the heavy lifting there and explaining all the, uh, the more complicated steps, uh, that we've been through. Oh, great, thank you. I wanted to add something certainly to John's comments, and it's, uh, when we were here last summer, oh. I just won't touch it anymore, Diana. When we were here last summer, you might recall that we were in a big hurry to, uh, to go ahead and get things going. And at that time, uh, the company took on a new, uh, CEO, Nader Camelli. Nader has some background in the medical business. He worked for a company called Boston Scientific for a big part of his career, uh, medical technologies. And he began pushing for the project to be state-of-the-art. And as his research continued, what he discovered through talking with different operators and really understanding the memory care business, is that the interior architecture drives to a great extent the level of care that, uh, that you can provide. And we also discovered that the larger the facility, the more amenities, uh, we, we could provide. So there's no question, John used, I think, the right words, really, state-of-the-art facility has been developed. A tremendous amount of research has gone into the interior of the facility and really how it'll, how it'll operate. It's been, been a pleasure and been very exciting to be a part of all those design discussions despite how long they've, uh, how long they've taken. There's no question, we are ready to go. We're, we're very excited about getting started as soon as the, the weather permits us, and we, we're working with, uh, city staff to get a foundation-only permit so that we can get the foundation going while some of the details to the drawing get, uh, get cleared up. So I, I felt like I would give an explanation as to where our, uh, where our timeline has gone. But as you can see, I think that the building turned out, uh, just, just spectacular, and rather than be one big box as, uh, we were afraid this much architecture might turn into, you can see on the site plan, I think, does a nice job of showing you that there's some, uh, some bend to it, and there'll be some, some real appeal as you, as you drive by. The building would be shadowed that way. Uh, we also, uh, I think, found the right landscape architect and done a nice job with the landscape architecture. Are there any questions I might be able to answer, or? Yes, sir.
Alderman Woods.
When are we gonna be able to see the rest of the plan?
I'm, I'm sorry, the rest of the, uh?
The rest of the plan, the, the building itself.
The rest of the building, the exterior architecture's coming together, uh, the, the sides of the building, and then the floor plans, uh, I'd say inside a couple of weeks. I, would it be okay if I sent a courtesy copy to, to John and he could, uh, he could forward that, uh, that to you?
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Um, I don't know who's gonna dress, who to put this question to. I thought there was supposed to be some stores at the bottom of the place.
If you don't mind. Not only stores, but, uh, one of the things that, that we've learned in our research and that we've seen by some other successful facilities, is when the facility itself doesn't stand alone and is completely isolated for simply the patients and the residents. So at the center, on the first floor, will be what we call a bistro. So it's a restaurant opportunity, and it really does two things. We don't expect to run a big restaurant operation and, uh, and put a dent in the restaurant business here in Wooddale. But it is our expectation that the bistro feels a little bit more like a restaurant. It feels like you're going someplace special when you are a resident there, and we do expect that we collect some outside traffic. But in addition, we're working with, um, not sure how you, how to best describe it, but, uh, a little mini pharmacy operation. So it's not a Walgreens, it's not a CVS, but in there is the opportunity for some retail sales tax to be developed, and people to become familiar with the facility, familiar with, with the place, if you will. In addition, we're talking to a home healthcare organization where they would reach out and maybe, um, you know, rent, uh, oxygen, uh, equipment. They, they might rent, uh, you know, uh, equipment for people that have a temporary condition at home, you know, broken bone, uh, broken hip, that sort of thing. So again, part of the community outreach and getting the community familiar with the place and its services. In addition, uh, a, uh, an aerobics, uh, opportunity, we're talking to, uh, an operator of a, uh, it's aerobics, but not, not aerobics like we're thinking, uh, or at least like I immediately think. Aerobics more, uh, along the lines of, uh, for, for elder care. So the idea is that there's these retail-like, uh, operations on the first floor that have some, some benefit to the community.
Can I go?
Follow-up.
I think I've seen you before.
Possibly. I, I had more hair.
You're saying, when you're saying "we", are you memory care? I, I'm thinking that, I've seen you before with a project here before.
You, you did.
But it wasn't memory care?
Absolutely not. It wasn't memory care at all. It was a, uh, single-family subdivision. I think I helped, uh, someone to entitle here, and there was a townhouse development that I believe I helped, uh...
So what is your title?
Well, for this client, uh, for the memory care customer, um, I've been working for these folks for about three years. There's, uh, there's several memory care facilities that they're working on, uh, around the Chicago area, and my job is to help organize architecture and the engineering piece and reach out to the communities to find the right places for the, uh, for, for the buildings. So by no means am I a memory care expert. I've, uh...
Okay, so you're like a broker in a way?
Oh, no, no. Um, I'm, uh, I, I think it, I think the memory care facility calls me their owner's representation to architecture and engineering.
Okay. Could I go on? One more question.
Is it regarding the construction, the, the plan that we're reviewing?
No.
Okay. Um, it, anything else regarding the, the, the plan before us? Just one question for me. Is this, uh, is the, what's the level of service that's gonna be in this facility? Is it gonna be like stage four, or? What is it gonna serve?
You have to forgive me, um, a little rusty here. I believe there's stage four and stage five, uh, patients. We, we do not handle the stage five patients. We don't handle the last stage, and I, I forget if that's four or five. You, you might, you might know. The, the last stage would be a very intense, uh, nursing operation. We're not, uh, we're not looking for those patients. So part of the building is memory care, uh, part of the building is assisted living. But it, it isn't that level of nursing care that's more like a hospital, if you will, to answer the question.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, um, Alderman Woods?
What would be the breakdown of assisted living versus memory care?
My, my current understanding is we're about two-thirds memory care and one-third assisted living.
And besides medical issues, what really would be the difference in a person's stay at the facility?
A memory care patient, um, the word I'm most familiar with is dementia care. So, um, as a memory care patient, you've, um, you're not allowed to leave the building without, um, someone help, you know, taking you out. So you're, you're checked in and checked out, uh, by a guardian-type person. There are various stages of, uh, of memory care needs, um, but they're, uh, certainly less self-sufficient people, you know? Folks that are, uh, that, that find this place as a result of a memory care need.
So then what do you define assisted living as?
Assisted living is, um, you're, um, that, that patient or, or that resident might be more or less self-sufficient, but their family's decided it might be best for someone to monitor the medication that they take, check in on them several times a day, make sure they're, they're finding their way to their meals, uh, that, uh, that's substantially less care than the memory care.
And if I could just one, what level of, uh, medical or nursing care are you guys gonna provide under that scenario?
There are nurses on staff round the clock, uh, for, for certainly the memory care patients and anyone else that might need that, uh, that level of care. There's a lot of assistance to nurses on the staff as well. One of the reasons the project is the project is that it's part of this EB-five, uh, employment-based visas. You might recall from, uh, a last discussion, uh, in order for the project to be funded by its foreign investors and for those foreign investors to gain their visas, the job, the, the project has to generate ten jobs, ten permanent jobs, for each of the investors. So for every investor, it generates ten jobs. Not every real estate project would qualify that, for that. Certainly not every business would qualify for that. But because this particular business is so employment-intensive, it works in the employment-based visas program.
Thank you.
Alderman Lazara.
I like the building.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm very happy to see that, uh, there is someone that's taken some interest in this property and is willing to invest this kind of money into Wooddale. I wish you a lot of luck and, um, you know, uh, I'll, I'll support you as much as I can, 'cause I believe you're in my ward anyway.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for, um, for this opportunity for our city.
I, I had, uh, I had an interest in this property some number of years ago when I was back here with, uh, substantially more hair, and I, I just couldn't quite make the, the condo project work, and I lost it to the very bright, uh, rights, uh, but, uh, I'm back. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So to move forward on this, are you looking for a motion, or, or what are we looking for here?
No, it's really, there's no motion or vote really necessary. Again, this is just a courtesy review. Staff wanted to keep you in the loop on the change in the building, but as far, I mean, everything else has really already been approved. It's just the city is changing the shape of the building. Everything else remains the same, the parking count, the developers' agreement. As I said earlier, we have the letter of credit that's been submitted already for, to complete the project. So this is basically just, hey, we've changed the shape of the building, do you like it? Thanks very much, see you tomorrow.
So might, I do one follow. So does that might mean that you could issue a foundation, uh, permit?
Correct. Once the final proposed engineering for the site is approved, we're ready to issue them a site permit and a foundation permit. I mean, we would, of course, have to do the plan review on the foundation. But yes.
'Cause I, I don't wanna lose this project. I think it's a great project for this community. I don't wanna lose it. I already know that they are also building one, I believe, in Wheaton. I think you're looking at, or some contractors looking out there.
There, there is a couple of them floating around, uh...
Right, so there are more of these coming. So I do not wanna lose this project, and if it means that we have to try to keep this project moving forward, let's get it going because that's, needs to be done.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking to wrap this up. So, uh, any final comments? I'm gonna call on Alderman Coles, then Alderman Woods. Alderman Coles?
Yeah, we lost one project. No, let's not lose this one. This is a very good idea. We lost one a couple of years ago.
Alderman Woods.
I would agree, it's a very good idea, but I would like to see the building. I wanna, I wanna see you guys move forward, too. Obviously, coming through this last economic period, you know, there's been a lot of things that happen in the building industry, and the last thing I'd wanna see is a hole in the ground and a foundation. So it makes me nervous. Although I'm for the project, the faster you can get those building drawings in here, the better off. Thank you.
If I could adjust the concern, um, my receiving hairline is a direct result of the economy you speak of. So I've been very careful about what sort of projects and what sort of clients I, I get involved with. I can tell you that this project is fully funded. All the investors have put their money into the escrow, so the investors are absolutely ready to go. Through, i- in relation to the other projects, um, our organization has liked this around town, none of them are this big. Turns out, Wooddale was just absolutely the perfect place for this super center. Uh, it's really, uh, really worked out nice. The demographics just been, been beautiful, the location's just been beautiful. As to how we're moving along, um, we've had trouble keeping up with the city staff's pace on this. The, the city's just been great. It's been, been a delight. Thank you.
Okay, um, would, uh, you wish to make a final comment?
To John, yes.
Okay, and then we'll wrap this up. Last comment, um, Alderman Roy Wesley.
John, and I'm looking at these pictures here. Do they have any border from the train, from the train tracks to the parking here? I, I mean, before, we were looking at condos there. You know, like a wall or a fence?
You're talking about a fence along the south side of the property?
Yes. I have a concern with, I, I don't know if they have a back door there to the, in the back of the building there, or, or not. I'm in favor of the project, of course, but I'm also concerned about safety for, or is that a, another time for another subject?
Did you say safety?
Yes.
That, for, for the residents, or?
Yes.
Okay.
But because it is against the railroad tracks.
Right. That has not been addressed on the landscaping plan. It's never really been a requirement that we have, uh, imposed on them, so...
But we never had elderly people, I, or...
No, I, I would have to go back. I don't believe the subdividers agreement or the developers' agreement required that...
We, we currently don't have a fence. We're certainly willing to enter into discussion about, uh, what would be the right kind of fence. In terms of, uh, residents' safety, uh, they simply can't leave the building without being escorted, uh, so...
I've seen nursing homes where the people just walk out and...
Yeah, and, and that, that, that wouldn't be this kind.
I don't know if these people are...
Different, different level of care.
I understand that, but I don't know how these people are, if their, if their mind goes, or whatever. I mean, as you get older and...
If, um...
...mind goes at forty-seven, but...
If, uh, security's the primary concern, I, I can, uh, again, I use John as the conduit. I'll, I'll go ahead and send you a description of how the internal security would work. And then if, if the staff reaches a place where they're not comfortable and would like to see a fence, happy to be accommodating.
Okay. I, I would like a follow-up on this later, John.
Well, we've never had a fence there in the past, right? Like, did, do we require any business to put up a, a fence aligned the tracks?
No, we haven't, yeah. No.
But we've never...
So I don't see why we'd want, we'd wanna start something new.
We've never had a development like this either.
Well, the residents are held in there with, like, the doors do lock, and, and there's like a code that you have to get out, or there's like, there's, there's like double, triple checks on people getting out.
Forgive me, I haven't done a good job of describing all that, but I'd be happy to put it in a letter, and, and again, if we're not comfortable, you know, we'll go to the next level. So, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and taking us through this.
It's a pleasure. If, um, if, if there's anything else you need from us, John, otherwise we'll excuse ourselves for the evening. Thank, thank you. Thanks again.
Okay, so that was for review only. Next item is, uh, a report and recommendation on a rear yard setback for a certain, um, property. And, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Forrest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. This is the case, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jennifer Henigan, our new assistant director, and, uh, she was involved in preparing the presentation, uh, for the, uh, Community Development Commission and also for this board, so I will turn it over to her.
Thank you very much, good evening. Uh, the requested variation is to accommodate a new detached, single-family home within the Ethan Woods subdivision. The subject property is a vacant lot that's surrounded by a vacant property to the north, detention on the west, and a lift station and forest preserve on the south. The petitioner's requesting a variation to decrease the rear yard setback, uh, from, I believe, thirty-five to, or, sorry, thirty feet to twenty-five feet. Staff did recommend approval of this variation based on the irregular, non-rectangular shape of the lots, which creates a significant development constraint. The petitioner is unable to build within the required setbacks. The location, abutting the detention outlots, will have minimal impact on surrounding properties, and the proposed residents will comply with all of the other zoning requirements of the R-three district. The CDC didn't make a motion to recommend that the council approve the requested variation, only on that portion of the lot indicated on the submitted plans.
Okay, so, so there is a report and recommendation. Any, uh, comments or questions before I make a motion to, to accept? Is there any? Alderman Coles?
This would be the second home that we built in there, and I think we shouldn't refuse to have the second home built in there, 'cause we've been trying to get stuff in there for the last five years or six years. So anything that's being built in there will also make the development get a little further along. If you get, we got one house, now we got two. The next thing you know, we'll get three. And then that's the way it'll fill up. Now, if we turn it, a variation of what, seven feet? The amount's two, we turn that down?
Five.
That's because of this kind of a lot it is, I, I think we're making a mistake. So I think we should leave it in and vote for yes, the way it is, and be done with it.
I'm not clear. Are, are you agreeing with the variation from thirty to twenty-five?
I'm agreeing with the variation.
Okay, so, so is that your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So is the motion a second? Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for taking us through that, Jennifer. And, uh, next item, our items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, live entertainment ordinance in March. Item B, approval of minor zoning variations by staff. And C, update to hazard mitigation plan. Any other items for future meetings? Then I'm going to make a, a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call the Public Works Committee here. Order, like, the minute taken, same people present. I need a motion approved, the minutes from February fourteen, two thousand and thirteen. That is my motion.
Second.
Have a second. Corrections, concerns, questions? All in favor? Aye. Pos, motion carries. Item number four, reported recommendation, pay request, parcel two, in, independent machine industrial for the booster pump number four and five-one project, not to exceed a hundred and forty-five thousand, fifty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? No pos, motion carries. Item considered future meeting. Anyone? Okay, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Public Works Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm gonna have to call the, uh, finance, uh, pardon me, Finance Administration Committee to order, uh, the same people present. First is the Google Minutes meeting in February fourteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. The next item is the one we have all been waiting for, the report and recommendation on the two thousand and fourteen budget. And for the time being, we'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman. In the packet last Friday, um, these slides were included in there, in the note version. So we're gonna go through the slides, and the slides are gonna be the framework for the conversation around each of the tabs within the budget. So with that, uh, we'll get into the first slide. The city has five different fund types, uh, the general fund, the main operating fund, that's where all of the operating departments are, admin, clerk, finance, et cetera. The special revenue funds are funds that the revenues are for a specific purpose, road and bridge, motor fuel tax, tourism, narcotics forfeiture. Capital projects funds being, uh, the Capital Project Fund and the Equipment Replacement Fund, enterprise, uh, being water, sewer, metra, and sanitation. And trust and agency, uh, is the police pension fund and the special service area funds. Those are funds that we budget for and maintain custody of, of, uh, a lot of the money for, but isn't technically the city's money to actually do things with, like, police pension fund. We can't spend that money, but we still account for it on our books as a custodian of the fund. Last year, we implemented GASB fifty-four, uh, per, uh, GASB requirements. So this is the second time around, you're seeing those with, uh, the new fund balance distinctions. So nothing new this year, just, uh, refreshing and, uh, letting you know that this is the second year you'll be seeing those. In the budget, uh, we budget a total of fourteen funds. Six have a proposed increase, eight have a proposed decrease. This is the exact same as last year, six and eight. Capital spending, each of the last four years has increased. The last two years, of course, are because of the treatment plant. The years before that, we're just, uh, ramping up road projects, water main projects, um, et cetera. As you can see there, we have the second phase of the treatment plant, Royal Oaks, gonna engineer the Ward Two Streets, and then continue to replace water mains and begin the stormwater improvements, uh, this year particularly on South Cedar and in the Tall Oaks area. Just a quick review of the process. Tall Oaks area. Just a quick review of the process. Right around the end of the year, we sent out the preliminary sheets to each of the department heads, and they sent them back to us, and we prepared the book that you got two weeks ago, after a couple of meetings with each of the department heads. So each department or fund has its own tab in the book and its own slide in the presentation. So, what we're going to do as we go through them, you know, it's like to get a consensus on each section, each department or each fund before we move on. That way, we're not bouncing back and forth, you know, you know, losing track of where we are. So with that, get a little more overview on the entire budget, and then just, you know, start right at the left edge and burn right through it. So, we're going to start with the general fund, special revenue, and so on and so forth through the special service areas. Big picture, this is for, for all funds. You can see there what the revenues have done, budget for this year, projected, and then the proposed for next year, as well as the expenditures. The jump in fourteen is predominantly based on the increase in the treatment plant costs, going from ten million to about sixteen million. So that six million dollar increase accounts for a lot of that jump on the expenditure side of things. Housekeeping things, as we go through the slides, pretty much all of them show an increase in personnel costs. And unless otherwise noted, I'm sure you're aware, there are two proposed personnel additions in the book, and there's one division that's down a little bit in personnel costs. But unless otherwise noted on a particular slide, personnel costs are just up by contractual increases, FICA, and an increase in IMRF. So you're not going to see a description every slide of why personnel's up. It's the same on every slide. The items that are below the table with the summary data on it are what we'll call the reason why each of those categories have moved so much. It's not an exhaustive list. That's not to say that one line item didn't move up five hundred dollars and one didn't move down five hundred dollars, but that minor five hundred dollars here or there, give or take, didn't cause the significant change in the category. So, we put what caused the change in the category, the significant cause, in there. Obviously, if there's questions on anything above and beyond that, we can go into that, but those are the, the big ticket items, if you will, on each one. Then as we go through the slides, from a couple of slides ago, get a consensus on each slide, which is going to be each department or each fund, and then continue moving on.
Alderman Wesley.
One question. When you've figured out, when you're doing this presentation, the personnel and the cost in the budget, is that counting, let's put the contract that's under negotiations right now, do we increase the salary, or are we going to be sidebarred at the last minute for a contract? I'm just asking that.
Sure. There's, you know, a hypothetical increase in there based upon the direction you gave staff a couple of months ago when they left the session. We look at that as the guideline.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that's, thank you.
Right ahead.
So getting into the, the general fund, which is the biggest fund we have, we're currently on track, as you can see, to end with just a hair under a hundred and eight thousand dollar surplus. And bear in mind that that does include five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in land purchases that we hadn't originally budgeted for, on the commercial street properties. So, just a little quick math, you know, if, if we hadn't have bought those, we'd have ended the year at, what, about six ninety-four to the good. So, a very good year on the revenue side and expense control, again, on the staff level. So you can see, you know, the revenues are going to be up a little bit, the expenses, and you can see where the projected's going to come down, and the, the swag between the budget and the projected. So we're, we're projecting to end up a little bit better than we had actually budgeted for, even including those land purchases there. And then going into this year, the budget as proposed, if everything stays exactly the same as it is right now, would have a surplus of sixteen thousand nine thirty in it. That's as presented right now. So getting into some more of the, the details in the general fund, proposed revenues for this year's budget are up three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. But you can see the categories there. You can see taxes are up almost half a million dollars, where fines and fees are down a hundred thousand, and then investments down, miscellaneous down. So, going through the notes there, in the taxes category, the telecommunications tax is up significantly from the past year. About the last eighteen to twenty months, we've seen a significant rise in telecommunications taxes. In speaking with other municipalities or their finance directors, the, the best thing that we can get out of the state and just from looking at our own personal cellphone bills, is the advent of the smartphone and these unlimited data packages. Before, you know, you'd have your phone bill for seventy dollars and then add texting, whatnot, where now the unlimited data is a hundred, a hundred and twenty. And since the tax is based on the actual bill, since the bills are higher, the taxes are higher. So, smartphones, the iPhones appear to be, their pack, data packages appear to be helping us out. Increase in charges for service, that slide up tick, is after having a full year of the AT&T franchise fees in there, we've been able to, to get a better hold on what those numbers are going to be, as well as some nominal price increases from Comcast along the way as well. Fines and fees are down some. A lot of this is kind of a right sizing of the numbers between the court fines and the tracks guard. When we took the tracks guard out of the, the court system and brought it in-house, we knew that the revenue from tracks guard was going to increase, but the court fine number was going to go down some. Unfortunately, without a whole lot of data behind it the first year, you know, we, we couldn't get a refined number. So now we have almost a full year of that, and so we're, we're right sizing those numbers, getting a, a closer number in there.
Alderman Wesley.
Are we going to let him go through the whole presentation first, or if I have a question on the general fund, how are we going to do this?
Yeah, we can ask questions now.
Okay.
As long as pertaining to each.
Right, this is a general fund. Am I correctly going through?
Correct, general fund, the revenue side.
As I took my red pen, that everyone kids me about, the, the building, building permits, he went down on building, we went down on building permits. Am I correct, or are, are you ready for this question?
For the, for the projected, you're correct. It did go down a little bit.
So we projected lower. Now, why would we predict lower? Why do we go lower knowing that we just got a building that's going to be under construction that we just passed? The other thing is, with all the sound installations coming in, the building permits should go up because they all got full permits for all those things. So, are we, let's put it this way, are we making this number look lower for when it comes back next year that we got? We made all this money on permits, or is this a, a hard number that you guys really physically looked at online? Because I don't know how we could drop building permits, because what was a building permit that he collected for this year, as of right now? Two eighty-five?
Sure. The two eighty-five is what they're projecting the revenue to be as of, at the end of this fiscal year, so April thirtieth of this year.
Does he make, hey, go on. Is he going to make two eighty-five? What's he got in permit right now? Is, do we have a hard number so far? What we got right now?
Mr. Forrest. Yeah, defer to Mr. Forrest on this, that part of the question.
Because if we aren't going to make two eighty-five, then maybe that number was wrong, that we projected last lower. So my question is, with all the permits that's going to be issued here, we just issued another permit for a house up here tonight. I just...
Sure, I'll let him address part of that, and then I'll address part of that as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if I have my current monthly report with me. Let's just check the City Manager's Report, because you do, as you recall, get monthly reports from Community Development. That gives you an up-to-date revenues and so forth. I apologize, I didn't have that right at hand.
My concern, if you, if you pick two eighty-five and you're at almost two eighty-five, it went down, and we just approved a huge development with permits, and we gained three hundred ninety-some homes done for sound installation. So I don't know how you could drop it down, if that's the case. I mean...
Well, we haven't received any applications yet for the soundproofing, and we haven't really had any contact in the department yet. From, I mean, we've had some initial contacts, we know that it's going to be a couple of contractors doing the, the job. We're not sure if the scope of work is all going to be in fiscal year fourteen, how that's going to be. So, for us to just, it's just kind of theoretical to guess what it's going to be. As far as the permit fee from the memory care, that's really going to be a one-time permit fee that comes in. I think Mr. Wilson can probably address that, but it's not like we're going to get a building like that every year. So it's nothing that we can kind of count on annually to be added to our budget.
Okay.
Yeah, and for the Mr. Forrest point, it's on page twenty-eight of the Budget Book, bullet point six, talks about one-time revenues not being included in the budget to support the structural, ongoing activities of the municipality. So, we could put it in, but if you make a decision to add a program or a person based upon that one revenue for that one building, that's not going to be there next year, and then suddenly the building permits crash by seventy-five or a hundred thousand, and we have to cut that program, it's not really a fair representation of the ongoing likelihood of, of receipts for the municipality. So, if you want to, you know, earmark those permits for a specific project, a one-time project or something, that would be, we could certainly do that. But, revenue policy six says that one-time revenues, and I think I agree with Mr. Forrest, that that's probably more of a one-time revenue. I think it's been being built for, what, three or four years now, I think? Every budget year, we've been counting on it, or it's going to have been coming in. So, you know, when it comes in, we could, you know, earmark it for a project, earmark it for other developments or something like that. But to count on it for the structural, ongoing revenues of the city wouldn't specifically be an appropriate way to classify it.
Well, my concern is, I'm sorry. My concern is, I don't think we made our numbers from the last year that we predicted. And this year is going to be a bigger, I would say, bigger bucks for permits. And I, I just, I just don't know where we came up with that high number, or whatever we came with.
Mr. Manager.
Well, if you look, we budgeted for three hundred and fifteen, so we're trending not to make that. We're trending two eighty-five. So we do anticipate an uptake, aside from the Wooddale Memory Care. So we did bump it up to three oh five. So we bumped it up from our projection this year. So it is being bumped up.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Now, the last time we had an influx of cash, I think when Polte was it? I think the council then put it in an economic development fund. Is that correct? That's, that's what we did the last time. I would imagine that's where we're headed this time if, if we do get all those permits. Is that correct?
I mean, for the, for the Wooddale Memory Care one, yeah, if that's the decision to earmark that for economic development or something like that, we could certainly accommodate that, sure.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm, I'm talking.
I, I just, let me go one comment, if I may. On January ninth, it heralded, looked at the taxes for eighty-five percent of the community, or eighty-five communities surrounding Chicago, and the average per capital, capita taxes was two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Wooddale's is a hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And people keep talking about, well, Bensonville or Itasca has less. Itasca's actually at three oh one, and Bensonville's at two sixty-eight. So, we have a very nice picture here of taxes, really. We're not the lowest by any means, but we are below the median in per-person capita for taxes in Wooddale. Okay, please continue.
Alderman Shockey, may I?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Alderman Winger.
So, so now that we're getting back on this page, and right where we were at, the tracks guard, where does tracks guard revenue show up? Is it in, does it's a whole different fund now?
The tracks guard's in the general fund, where the court fees were.
So fines and fees, we changed from sending that through the courts to doing it in-house, correct?
Correct.
So then why wouldn't it just still be seven hundred sixty-nine thousand? Why is it a hundred thousand less, if it's still coming into the same bucket of money?
Sure. The aggregate of the tracks guard and the court fees, if you add the two of them together, equate out within a couple thousand dollars to the last two actual audited numbers that we have for those revenues. You know, the court fines, I don't, perhaps the, the chief could speak. I don't know if the county's taking some more, or the state's taking more. But one of the other, you know, court supervision is down a little bit. And one of the other things we had to be mindful of, too, and the chief can speak to this a little bit, is the, was it the license law? The driver's license law, where everybody's getting a driver's license. You know, a lot of our tickets came from suspended license, not having a driver's license. Well, if everybody's going to have a driver's license, we're not going to be able to raise many tickets for people not having licenses, since they're going to have one. So, there was a little bit of play on that, too, but defer to the chief on that one for a second.
Yeah, and as far as productivity numbers, you know, what you would think would lead to the increased fines, over the last, I'd say, eight years consistently, as each law is passed, that takes more off the top, that goes to special funds and special things, the city's share has become less and less. It used to be a lot more, it's dwindled down even more. So we're doing what we can to do anything we can in-house. There's only certain things we can do in-house, and we're doing all those that we can. As far as productivity goes, in the, the actual cases, DUIs are up substantially from last year. They're already ahead this year from last year's pace. Citations are on a, a similar number. And then, the big thing is now with the tracks guard coming in-house, we're getting a hundred percent of that fine. It's dropping some of our court cases down. So, I, I think we're going to see another year until we really get that consistent number, where this is where court fines are going to be, this is where our tracks guard number is going to be. So, I think these numbers are, hopefully, in my mind, a little conservative. With our new collection system, I'm hopeful that, that was passed this past fall. Hopefully, we start seeing some returns on that and collecting some of the fines that we haven't been able to in the past. And hopefully, that'll improve that number, too. You know, it, it's kind of in that, that one-year transition period. The, the tracks guard moving to in-house has been successful, but like I said, there, I just saw today, there's another bill pending in the state legislature that the circuit clerk will take another one to five percent off, right off the top of the, of any court fines that come through. So, our share of the fines that are assessed in court are probably going to go down again next year. It's, it's been happening for close to a decade now, I mean, I would really say.
So, so are we saying that, let's say, tracks guard was in the court still, would that six hundred sixty-nine thousand be a lower number?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's helping us, by bringing it in, it's helping us to some degree, but it's not keeping us at the same levels that we were at last year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
And let's keep in mind that tracks guard is not there to make money. It's for safety.
That's correct. And I would also add, since it's been put in, we haven't had any train versus vehicle accidents. That intersection used to be in the top five of the nation, so it has helped. I'm sure if you've been out there, you've noticed that Metro recently put in LED lights. We've actually seen a reduction in the number of citations that are issued with those light improvements. So that's the goal that we're looking for. You know, certainly sometimes you have to have a, something behind the enforcement mechanism to make people comply, but the compliance has been on a better rate, and the lighting has also improved that, too.
We're still getting about four violations a week.
Actually, we're getting about...
Three point nine six or something like that.
Three to four a day. Yeah, I mean, we're still...
A day it is.
Yes.
Not a week. Okay.
Yes.
I can't believe it. You know, when are people going to learn? Anything else? Ald, Mr. Mayor, you had your hand up before.
No, it's okay.
Okay, Alderman Wesley.
I have charges and services. Can we go on to police reimbursement? So we go from sixty-eight thousand, five ninety-two, proposed sixty-eight, five ninety-two, proposed fifty-four, two sixty-five. Why is that down?
That's because the, the officer that now is in the schools has significantly less years on the force than the one that left the school.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then just to finish out, the investment in miscellaneous are down both for the same reason. It's more of an audit classification. Investment income, as I'm sure you're all aware, you know, interest rates are still anemic at best, so we're not generating as much as we had in years past. And then the miscellaneous line is our interest on the money that we have at IPBC, but they're facing the same sort of issues that we are as well with investment returns. So, now, those are both down for that one, and inter-fund transfers are the same as the prior year, so.
Mr. Mayor.
How far is the state behind now? How far is the state behind now on the income tax?
Three months. But, saying that, they've been three months behind for about two years now.
Right.
So we're still getting 12 months of revenue, albeit not the 12 months we would logically think they would be. We're still getting 12 months as we go through, so.
Okay.
Please continue. Oh, Mr. Wesley, you have?
Yeah, I'm on page 91. Are we still doing general fund, am I right?
Yes.
I got two. This court supervision, is that, we go from $40,000 to $22,000, down to $25,000. Is that with the court deal? That they got more supervision? Maybe I missed that?
Yeah, that's essentially because the, if someone got supervision on a tracks guard ticket in the past, that would be added on to there. It's a $20 fee that goes on to the case.
All right. And then, my other question is, what's this rent for $9,006? What are we renting?
The truck parking lot on Commercial Street.
Well, that's revenue coming in, then?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, one, okay, one thing, before we get off revenues, and this is unfortunately a more global issue, nowhere in the book, yeah, and I know I've talked to a couple of you about this, is the gaming revenue. For January, we got a little over $200 for January. So, I don't specifically want it to be a long conversation, but we need to figure out if we want to put the, you know, $3,000 a year in the general fund, or want to put it in tourism to help supplant, or to help fund economic development, or something like that, so.
I, yes. My suggestion is, I wouldn't put it in a general fund. Economic development, that's where that money should go.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry. But, I mean...
Right.
Sure, Mr. Wesley.
Why not tourism? Gambling promotes tourism. Because my opinion is, there's a lot of money coming in tourism fund, and why should we, why don't we start funding something else in our community, economic development, instead?
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
If we put it in tourism, that constrains on what we can do with it. If we put it in economic development, we can still do beautification, but we're a little more wide open.
Mr. Coles.
My personal opinion, we should start a special fund, not named Video Gambling, Gambling, or Gambling, but just in case we need something extra, where we can automatically take it out without questions. You know, like, say, the general fund needs a couple thousand dollars, or you want to get some little minor thing that's $10,000 or something like that?
You don't have to, you don't have to have, make out a special, you stick it right out of that fund, and you see how much it accumulates over a period of a year, and then you can decide what you want to put it in. Either the general fund, or building fund, or sewer water, or something like that. If I, I think it's a good idea that we start a different, you know, you don't have to just put a name on the fund, that we know what it is, and start an all-new fund, instead of having it floating around from this one to that one, and then you have a new fund, and then you have the money set aside. But, that's up to the finance department.
We do have a fund now for pool tabs and other types of gambling?
Yeah, the pool tabs and jar games goes into the general fund currently.
Into the general fund, so we don't have a separate, I don't know if this is going, these video machines are going to add a sufficient amount to make it worthwhile for a fund. So far, what has it been? Mr. Wilson?
Sure. Like I said, the January numbers, just on the two businesses in town that had them in January, was a little over $200.
And we're going to have approximately five establishments, probably, that will have the video gambling?
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of who's actually going to get them or not. I know the high-end projections were, I think, around $50,000. So, unfortunately, the first couple of months, because of the backlog, we're not going to know for a while. But, I mean, if there's a consensus for it to go into economic development, I mean, certainly we can work that out on the accounting end of things, as long as we know we're a consensus, where everybody wants it to go, and then we can work on the details of that.
I doubt, looking at the figures, if it's going to be much beyond $10,000 or $15,000 a year total for all the video games in town. So, Mr. Mayor?
Just a little something while we're talking on general fund, the income tax, the LGDF, there was a discussion today, this week, a couple days ago, actually, mayors and managers, where at first the state said they were going to keep that 2% increase, now they're talking, possibly rolling that back, and the city's share, all the municipalities, I should say, share was 10%. Well, right now, we get 6% of the new 5%. Well, if they do roll it back, they're also saying, well, if we're going to roll it back and give it back to the people, then they're going to take 4% away from the municipalities. So, that may be coming down. I mean, that's totally hypothetical, but just an FYI.
We get the short end. Mr. Wilson, continue.
Yeah, just before I move, I mean, is there a consensus on the general term of economic development for that gaming money?
We have a consensus. Anybody object?
I object.
Everybody else concurs? Show of hands. Who concurs? That's the majority.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the expense side, we have the FY13 budget, FY14 budget, and then the changes in there. As I mentioned a couple of slides ago, personnel, you know, contractually obliged salary increases, FICA increase in the IMRF rate. There are the two expanded level personnel items in there that also adds to that increase. Contractual, you can see, is down over $150,000. The largest decrease in there is in engineering services, which is in the admin budget, which we'll get to in a few slides. Commodities is down, nothing significant in there, just a lot of little reductions here and there as we're going through. Capital outlay, 25 of the $26,000 is a reduction in IT equipment purchases. Inter-fund transfer is down due to the transfer to the Equipment Replacement Fund for vehicles and police equipment. Then, other is up predominantly due to the increase in the Police Pension Fund levy request, which we discussed during the property tax levy conversation in December. So there were some items that were down in there, but those were outweighed by the increase in the Police Pension Fund levy.
And we did have a discussion about the miscellaneous or other. So we don't have to bounce back and forth in the book. You said you would be able to footnote the major ones in the other, as we're talking $3 million bucks?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Next year, we'll do that. Alderman Wesley, you have a question?
What is classified miscellaneous? I noticed that was a lot of them, fresh by memory.
Sure.
We'll actually get to that when we get into the individual categories.
Yeah, I mean, if, well, see, if you want to back up one slide? Okay. Well, just generically, and then we'll get more into it in the slides, but, you know, we have the six categories there. So anything that, you know, the contribution of the Police Pension Fund isn't really a personnel cost, I mean, so it's ones that don't fit neatly into one of those top four buckets. It's kind of the infamous catch-all designation. All right, so getting into the administration department budget, and if you're following along in the binders, you know, now it's going to be going tab by tab. So, the administration department tab, which also begins on page 94. It says, as I mentioned on the last slide, contractual services is down significantly, largely related to the decrease in engineering costs to the consulting engineers. And then, capital outlay, as I mentioned, last year was $100,000 for the purchase of IT equipment, service agreements, things of that nature. This year, we were able to knock that down to $75,000 for IT, for the IT needs. So those are the significant changes there. Overall, administration's down just under $107,000, or 12% year-over-year, budget to budget.
Questions, Mr. Mayor?
Brad, when you said the engineering costs are down, I see you're projecting basically $56,000 less. That's, we're doing that more in-house work, RFPs, we're doing ourselves or something?
It's a little bit, I'm going to defer to the manager on that one.
Throughout the last part of this fiscal year, the middle part of this fiscal year, we've been trending down on relying on engineering firms.